Hi, good evening, Dayton. Welcome to the Town of Dayton Planning Board Meeting. Regular Planning Board Meeting happening on Wednesday, November first, 2023. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. How do we do now to an empty room? Okay, you want to remind everybody this is a public meeting, being video and audio recorded for Cable Broadcast. To confirm, our next meeting will be happening in two weeks' time on Wednesday, November fifteenth, at seven PM Eastern Standard Time. Don't forget to change your clocks back this weekend.
Thank you.
You're now leaving daylight savings. We don't save the winter, we save the summer. Okay, so, first order of business is to view, discuss, and act on the site plan and review. So we have on the agenda to the site plan review, Mr. Figurito. For Zero Elm Street LLC, Zero Elm Street on Map twenty, Lot eighty-four dash four, storage facility. Now, the applicant is not here this evening. So what we wanted to do is if you look in your packets, for this package, there is a proposal by the engineering firm to do a review of the submission. So if you had a chance to look at that, give you a moment. So the only thing we're going to do this evening is to vote on, is it accepting the proposal?
Yes.
Zero Elm Street.
Okay.
They want to put us, they have a site plan that they submitted to us. The applicant is not here tonight.
Yep.
They asked us, did they ask us to continue it?
We don't need to continue, it's not a public hearing. So what we can do is just accept the scope for the peer review.
Got it.
And then, the applicant is scheduled to appear before the board for the presentation at our next meeting on November fifteenth.
Ready? It's a pretty extensive packet, I gotta get down to the, you put that.
It's like at the very end of that section, it's the very last one.
Got it, okay. Should add this open already. Hundred and twenty-two pages, that's why. The soil plan, and there's the meeting schedule. Yeah, unfortunately it didn't make it into my packet, but I do have it in the email.
Do you want it, you want mine?
I got it here electronically, I think. There it is, I got it. All right, so you guys, did you guys find the proposal yet? It's like, it's like finding, it's like where's Waldo?
It's Weston and Sampson.
Weston and Sampson, yep, that's the one. Okay, so on that proposal, let me just review it real quick. So it's from October thirtieth, it's from Weston and Sampson, and I'm not going to read it in its entirety. Unfortunately, can't read the man's signature, but in this proposal, the they mentioned the reference documents that they have received, the materials for the application for the Elm Street project, which is a bolted list. And the scope of the work will include review of the materials listed above, and do not anticipate a site visit. Under this proposal, we assume that the town will provide us with access to enforceable policies and standards related to development, to the development project. We anticipate that our review will include the following subject matter areas. Number one, bylaw compliance, and number two, site plan layout and stormwater. So they'll be hitting the site plan section in our bylaw and also reviewing it for stormwater compliance, as well as any other bylaw compliance. Schedule is, they intend to to begin the above scope of work within two weeks of receipt of a written notice to proceed, and anticipate completing the memorandum of findings within two weeks of completing. And the fee, as listed here, they recommend that the town establish a budget of seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Anything else, Carrie?
No, that's it.
Okay. So that's all we have before us tonight to act on?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or anything, can make a motion to?
Accept the peer.
Accept the peer review, scope of the peer review proposal.
I will make that motion if there's more questions.
We can always go to the discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. What do you got that one, he beat you to it by half a second.
Good.
Less than, less than a half a second.
About time.
All right, motion made and seconded, any discussion on this, if we have any questions on this particular proposal? This is a new peer review engineering firm, so this will be our first experience.
Yay.
It'll be exciting, I'm sure.
All in favor, did we do that?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, no questions, take it to your vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's four ayes. Four ayes, excellent, thank you. All right, so. Open intended. Eight ayes over here. All right, so next order of business is to set the 2024 meeting schedule. So in your packet, page one hundred and twenty-two of your packet, you will find 2024 schedule. So our meeting dates are on the left, and as always, application deadlines provided in the middle column, and in the form aid deadline, in the column next to that. So we got two meetings in January, February, March, April, May, and then, starting in June, we got one in June, one in July, one in August, one September, and then back to two meetings in October, two meetings in November, and then two meetings in December.
Okay.
So what did we do this year with the 2023 schedule in December? Do we have two meetings in December?
A lot of times it's slow.
Okay.
Especially the closer you get to Christmas.
Okay.
So if we don't have anything on the agenda, you can cancel the meeting.
Got it.
And I will be here for the July meeting.
Okay.
All right. So that's, that's what we have before us, anybody have any requested modifications, maybe some additional meetings you'd like to add on there?
You're funny.
Okay. No questions, all right, so can somebody make a motion to accept the 2024 meeting schedule?
Don't move.
Second. Man, Joe, what's up, man, it's twice.
All right, that's all right, that's good.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's four ayes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Easter Day for putting that together. Next item is the approval of the meeting minutes for October eighteenth, 2023. You were not present? Did you watch the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, good, we're heading that forward, you can, you are allowed to vote.
Allowed to vote.
Excellent, all right, someone want to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Hey, nice job, Joe.
I'll second.
Nice. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, four ayes. Mr. Easter Day, is there any correspondence at this time? Any public input?
Hey, there's a fly behind me.
Nobody snuck in while we were having the meeting.
Okay, I'd like to say a few things, sir, under public input.
Sir, wow, that's a sir.
Sir, hey, I'm complimenting you, Jeff, Jeff Cavalo.
Thank you, Mr.
You're doing a fantastic job the other night at the special town meeting. You did a great job, Jeff, presented well, and I think everybody understood what you were saying.
Good.
But furthermore, I would also like to say that I've been on a planning board for quite a while. And since you became the chairman, things have changed. And it was really nice that we had some working meetings, and actually, you know, went through some of the stuff, and I'm going to give you a lot of the credit because you're very good at what you're doing. But it's the first time that, you know, we've actually had a work session, other than, I used to say all the time, you know, we're not the planning board, we're the action board, because usually we just come here and take action, you know, and everybody before us, but it was actually the first time that we did planning, and it paid off, and it was really nice.
Good, I'm glad.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you guys for coming along.
And thank the rest of the board too, you know, everybody.
Yeah, we all, yeah.
But you know.
It's a lot of work.
Those two deserve.
Under good leadership, you know, and Carrie does a great job too, while I'm patting people on the back.
Oh, thank you.
You know, Carrie does, you know, we'd be lost without her, of course.
We sure would.
Been a huge job.
But it's, you're absolutely right, Woody, it's, the credit.
And thank you, Cable, for being here for us, okay? That's it, anything, and nobody else.
I appreciate, I appreciate the kind words, Woody, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah. So I don't think we have anything else, we're waiting on.
We're just waiting for Jim, so if you want a recess.
We could take a recess.
Until he returns.
Yeah. Do we vote on a recess, how's that work?
Yes.
All right.
Motion to recess.
Motion recess?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll be right back, Cable. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, board.
Thank you very much, Jim, for coming back this way. So, the reason why we wanted to talk to you tonight was about this idea of a originally it was floated as a solar committee, solar construction committee, but we all like the idea of like a more, a broader construction subcommittee.
Okay.
And the whole motivation behind it is to, to give, to give you and to give us better eyes and ears on ongoing projects in the town of Dayton.
Okay.
For two reasons, one is for making sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing, being developers are doing what they're supposed to be doing when they're saying they're going to do it, or not doing things when they're not supposed to be doing them. And also to kind of help out the residents when construction projects are happening in residential areas. Because right now, we're always, we're always in the catch-up mode, and always in the fire drill mode. Something, something bad happens, we hear about it. At that point, it, something bad has been going on for a while, and then there, they may have been complaints, or, or residents around have been affected by the situation, and we hear about it really, really light in the game, and then, then we try to act and try to get ourselves involved in something we could have probably, probably been involved in and would have been a better way of addressing it, had we known about it earlier. So, that's sort of the motivation, the, the idea was floated to us by Mr. Chris Affoli, he was here asking us if we would consider doing, his motivation was strictly on a solar committee thing, but we said, well, it makes sense, but what about something more broad? And so that's why we wanted to talk to people.
So I guess for me to understand the complexity of the issue, I need to understand how many complaints you're referring to.
Yeah.
Because I deal with them all the time, on a daily basis, most of them you're never, you're not aware of.
Right.
Because they're handled. So I guess, in order to have a fruitful discussion.
Sure.
I need to know, what is it we're talking about? Because I, as I understand it, there are two projects in town that have always had problems, two solar projects in town.
Yep.
I'm not discounting the complaints, I'm sure they're valid.
Okay.
But I don't want to reinvent the wheel because of two specific projects. If there's a more widespread problem.
Yep.
Then I think we should have a discussion about it. But I'm not certain that I'm aware of a more widespread problem, other than those two that everyone's aware of.
Okay. I don't know of any other complaints either, I just didn't know if it made sense. Because I know, you know, we, we had a very fruitful site visit with Grasshopper recently. I said, it would be good if we had more visibility, and, you know, as opposed to just trying to get the whole board together, and going, you know, to plan this big thing. You know, a lot of times it winds up happening is, one or two members on this board, it's either generally Woody, or it's Mr. Figurito here, who are, around the town, at some point will notice something, and then that's when we'll hear about it. So I don't know, in, when I, when I mention the subcommittee, I don't mean I want to just pluck five people out of the community and say, hey, now you're, here are the eyes and ears, and to not, the intent wasn't to, to deputize anybody, to give them any kind of power, really, because, you know, you're, you're the zoning enforcement officer, so we're not trying to divvy up that work. But what we're trying to do is make it so there's a lot more visibility, and a lot more transparency, so everybody can see what's going on, if there are issues.
So.
So if you tell me there's no issues, and we don't need to do this, then, okay.
Well, I don't, I don't see a widespread problem where people are getting away with things.
Okay.
That's, that's more specifically what I'm referring to.
Got it.
Are there issues? Sure, there are always going to be issues.
Okay.
And I'll be the first to tell you, as time has gone on in this town, this town has leaned on me more and more for things outside of why I was hired to come here.
Right.
So I'm not naive to the fact that I'm spread out. Not thin, because I'm, I'm doing a good job handling it all, but I am spread out.
Yep.
So I wouldn't have an issue with assistance, however, statutorily, I'm the only building official.
Right.
And I'm, I'm the zoning officer, and typically, because of, because of the statute, those are one and the same. For a reason. So I guess in order to give you my input, which I would love to do, I need to understand more of what this role is, is it more to say, I can't be on a site every day? So is it that you would want to have more routine site visits by a town official?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, so we have more.
I physically can't do that.
Yeah, and that's, my, my point is you can't be everywhere all the time. And I know that if we don't formalize it, we're not going to just out of our way go and do it. So the intent would be, you know, we know what ongoing projects are going on, we know which, which projects go through here at least, and then once, once they leave here, we go like this. And we go like this, next. And then, we, we do that all the time, and it winds up in, in your, on your plate. So how can we, how can we make that more efficient, or, you know, or better use of, of, of your time, and, and give us, give us more opportunity to get out there and, and.
I think Maris Lane is a perfect example.
Sorry, Maris Lane?
You know, Maris Lane, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just been one thing after another, and then we don't hear about it until it's already too late.
Yeah, so the intent is, yeah, so it, it could, it could evolve into whatever, whatever makes sense, but I think initially, you're right, site visits are really all I'm thinking of. And it could be like, hey, okay.
I don't think there's any problem with a site visit by public officials.
Okay.
It tells the developer that we're, we're involved, so I don't see an issue with that. And as everyone's aware, we issue, my office issues over a thousand permits a year, so there's no physical way that I can be everywhere, it's just not possible. I have to entrust a lot of the developers who are working here to do their part, and most of them, ninety-nine percent of them do their part. It's the rare occurrences like we've had, I mean, us, honestly, we have more solar farms than people are even aware of, because you can't see fifty percent of them. But as of late, we've had two in particular that have reared their ugly head and have, have reoccurring problems.
Right.
It doesn't mean they're not being addressed, it just means that they're, they become problem properties.
Okay.
Will site visits by public officials deter that? I don't think so. I think some of the problems that we're referring to, or were identified, we're dealing with from the regulatory standpoint. We, we've done that proactively, I think, as a community, this board in particular. So we're trying to learn from some of the mistakes that have been made, to be more aware of what neighboring properties think are concerns. That doesn't mean that I don't think site visits would be beneficial. I would just, I would like to discuss how that's going to happen. One, I would like it to be members of boards and committees, not just a member of the public.
Okay.
Because you're, as, as a member of a board or committee, you have an interest in, in the town, you've made a commitment to the town. I think it should be of a board or member, a, a member of a board or committee who has regulatory authority over that project. So in other words, if the special permit is through the planning board, then I think the town officials who visit would be planning board members.
I, I actually agree with that one hundred percent, because if another committee is formed, the confusion that's going to be taking place, and then, you know, they're going to get involved in this, they're going to talk to this person, that person is going to talk to another person, before you know it, you're, you're creating something. They were not the granting authority.
Right.
Of giving out any kind of permits or anything like that, and if, if we allow that to spread, it, it, it goes out like a wildfire.
So that, so that leads to another problem, or a discussion that needs to happen. If, if we have that mindset, then we could end up with multiple boards who need to have these small public official members who are going out watching a, a job, or, or a project in the absence of my daily visits. So there's no continuity, because they're, they're different people.
Yep. Okay. That'd be the point of a subcommittee, because you wouldn't, a subcommittee is not made up of new people, it's just people that are already there.
Right, right. So, you know, if, if this is a town-wide effort that you want to try to, then I, then I think it's going to require more discussion with.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Permitting authorities.
Okay.
The two biggest being the zoning board and the planning board, obviously. We've got comprehensive permits, and we've got the special permit processes through.
Yeah, maybe some people from zoning and planning would be good on that.
If it could be multiple, it, it could be a mix of, of members, I don't think that's.
Maybe a conservation person too.
That's not a bad idea.
You know, I, and we'll have to say, when we did Bristol Aggie, Gil Bane did offer anybody on the planning board to go over there anytime we wanted. Just check in at the, the trailer.
Right.
You know, they make sure you had a hat on, but they were a nice upfront and friendly outfit.
Yeah, that was a, that, they were a class.
But I, I never went over there because everything was just running like clockwork over there. Really.
I think they have to do that, those were professionals.
Oh, yeah.
On that site, you, that's, you don't see that a lot. You know, to have a hundred percent of the people working in there that, that are professionals on it. You're dealing with a lot of things, subcontractors, who look at what just happened on Brook Street Solar. You know, they go in there, they.
Yep, I, I, I will say this publicly on camera, and I want everyone to hear. The solar companies that I deal with on a residential and commercial side are some of the most unprofessional people I have ever met in my life. So they, they, they always change faces, we never have continuity. I can go through three project managers before we even get to a building permit. So, and this happens from the residential rooftop solar arrays, to the residential ground, right through to the large commercial scale projects, so. And I have no problem telling all of them that at home, because I have. So that's one of the issues. Is, is, is the fact that we're dealing with people who, who, I'm not saying they're there for, with any nefarious intent, but they're not the Gil Banes, or the.